It be six o'clock and a quorum is present, I will call to order the planning commission meeting for October 3rd.
Is that better? Okay. I will start over. It being after six o'clock and a quorum being present, I will call to order the planning commission meeting for October 3rd. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to welcome everyone to this evening's meeting. And we will have introductions. I know that we all know each other, but hopefully there will be people watching us on Zoom or looking at the the meeting at a later time. So we will go ahead and start and Paul, I'll let you start.
Paul Fontenot, planning commissioner.
Beck Ashby, I'm a planning commissioner and chair of the planning commission.
And that's Stuart.
Tyler McCloskey, planning commissioner.
Jim Fisk, senior planner.
Nick Bond, community development director.
Jackie Krugoff, planning permit clerk.
And then we'll go to you, Joe.
Joe Morrison, planning commissioner.
Thank you. I believe that is everyone and I appreciate you introducing yourselves.
We also have Jackie Brown, our utility manager online as well as Alex Campbell, our planning consultant. And I'm not sure, are there anyone else? Is anyone else online, Jim?
Okay, and we can introduce Jackie and Alex also when they, when their portion of the agenda comes available. With that, we always start our meetings with any public comment, if there's anyone in the public that wishes to provide testimony to the planning commission. Now would be the appropriate time to do that. I would also say that that would, is not for any of the public hearings we're having this evening. You would just need to give your testimony again during the public hearing so that was on that record. Do we have, we have one gentleman in the audience and do we have anyone on Zoom that would be wanting to give testimony this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move on down the agenda to the approval of the minutes from our September 5th meeting. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from September 5th?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the planning commission meeting on September 5th, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would be, we have, it is moved and seconded to approve the planning commission minutes from the September 5th meeting. Is there anyone who would be voting against that motion? I will ask a second time, is there anyone who would be voting against that motion? Tyler, I'm assuming that you're going to abstain.
Abstaining.
Okay, so the minutes from the September meeting are approved unanimously with one abstention. So on to our business items. The first business item is a presentation on the our 2024 comprehensive plan update, the existing condition report. And I'm assuming Jim, that's you?
Partially, yes.
Okay. And are you going to introduce Alex?
I'll introduce Alex. Alex Campbell with HBL is part of the consultant team that the city hired as part of the 2024 periodic update. You'll recall in August, we provided the commission with the existing conditions report. Alex is going to essentially summarize that and any feedback that we, we did receive and how that was incorporated into the existing conditions report. And also in the last two months or so, we've had a a pretty strong public outreach campaign. We've attended some farmers market and had presence online through social pinpoint. And so Alex is going to discuss the results of that effort and the next step. So Alex.
Alrighty, thanks, Jim. Hello, everybody. My name is Alex Campbell. It's good to see the planning commissioners again. Back again to keep the ball rolling with the comprehensive plan update for 2024. So like Jim had mentioned, back in August, Andrew Oliver with Leland Consulting gave you guys a presentation on the existing conditions report. And really the version that you guys have in the packet for this meeting is by and large the same. Essentially, we just wanted to give the planning commissioners one last opportunity to go through the report, provide any substantial feedback that you may have as we move forward to some of the policy efforts for the comprehensive plan update. A lot of the existing conditions report is really the background information that we use to justify some of these updates. Obviously, there's a large regulatory component for comprehensive plan updates, minimum items that must be included in the update process. But from the individual community perspective for Port Orchard, obviously we want to make sure that everything from demographic to permitting data is as up to date as possible. So that way, any goals and policies and land uses that we update through this comprehensive plan process are rooted in real data and real trends that we're seeing as we move forward and project out into the future. So from the existing conditions piece, really that's, that's kind of what I wanted to highlight on that and by and large the same as what you guys had seen in August. And really, we kind of want to button this existing conditions piece up. So that way we can move forward on some of our policy analysis and updates in association with the comp plan. With regards to the social pinpoint or public engagement piece, we put together kind of a public engagement summary memo also included in the packet for you guys. About 10 pages or so of some of what we heard and our online engagement primarily. So just for a little bit of background and context on this, we had our visioning and kickoff meeting all the way back in January. And the turnout was a little less than we, we had hoped, not uncommon, just to set the stage, especially for in-person only meeting and especially coming out of, I think, a lot of jurisdictions coming out of the COVID era. There's still a balance of in-person and online engagement. So recognizing a little slow public engagement on the front end of this process, we kind of leaned back on the public participation plan, which we had brought in front of you guys also at the kickoff at this process and looked at ways of how do we kind of boost our public involvement? Knowing that, again, that's kind of the backbone of this update process is hearing from the community and some of the priorities and how do we incorporate those in the update? And we utilize social pinpoint and online engagement tool. And really, the, the short summary of that online engagement method that went down was we tried to figure out how can we recreate our in-person meeting as close to a one, one-to-one comparison as possible. So that way, we're getting feedback on all the same information, both in-person and online. And the social pinpoint platform is, is really good for that because you can provide mapping exercises that reflect the physical maps that we prepared for the in-person meeting. You can drop pins online in the same way that in the physical meeting, people can place dots on the map. So really, that, that was a conscious effort on the city's part to make sure that that one-to-one engagement was there. So that way, any feedback we hear either in person or online has all the same context and all the same engagement opportunities or ability to provide feedback to us. So that's kind of the stage for the social pinpoint piece, the online engagement side. Like Jim had mentioned, there's been a big push on the city side for public engagement, particularly for social pinpoint. Both digital media campaigns, putting out posts on the city's Facebook feed and also farmers market engagement, which actually turned out to be a really nice boost in engagement for the online platform. So I think just getting out in a variety of methods, boost engagement, getting the word out in a variety of methods might get people involved that otherwise might not be. And again, leaning back on the public participation plan really was the backbone of why we wanted to take a deep dive on the public engagement for this first phase. Knowing that as we move on to the policy and land use elements, that public engagement and ensuring that we hear meaningful input from the community, now we have the basis to do it both in person and online for, for the rest of this process. So the summary of what we heard, the in-person meeting back in January, we had a total of seven attendees, two of which were planning commissioners. So thank you guys for coming out, appreciate it. Hope the rest of you guys were able to take the online survey and definitely stay engaged as the process goes on because it really does go a long way in terms of the responses that we receive and how we incorporate that into the comprehensive plan. With that being said, our online engagement resulted in a total of 103 contributions. And that's from a total of 47 different people. So, so one person can provide input on a multitude of different areas. And a, a brief summary of kind of our online engagement opportunity, again, it was intended to be reflective of our physical in-person meeting in January where we provided the same type of engagement boards, those being two public boards particularly interested in our sub-area planning efforts. So looking at those sub-areas individually, gathering public feedback, not only out before land uses, but items of either love or concern. What works well here today, what could work better? So trying to get public input on those. We also had a board for our comprehensive plan targets. Essentially, all of the target statements in the city's existing comprehensive plan provide a scale one to 10. Hey, how are we doing in meeting those targets from your perspective, from the time they were implemented to today? And our goal there was to really get a baseline of where from the public's perspective is the city doing well and accomplishing some of these target statements, which really are the overarching goals of the comprehensive plan and where maybe do we need to focus some attention or beef up some goals and policies in this update cycle? And then the final board that we had prepared and also again reflected online was our transportation network board. Almost a citywide look at large for open-ended feedback on the transportation network in its entirety, not only limited to vehicular uses, which is primarily what we hear on the planning side, but also non-motorized, so pedestrian, bicycle and also public transit. And even down to ferry service. And that's something that we actually didn't hear a lot of surprisingly in the public feedback. I figured we would hear maybe a little bit more to beef that up adjacent to downtown. But that's definitely something that we can take a closer look at as we get into the land use planning and some of our policy elements. So I just want to briefly summarize. I know you guys got this memo, so I don't want to read through 10 pages. We're line by line with you. But a couple of the pieces that I found particularly interesting in our survey results, kind of going down the list of the comprehensive plan targets. So again, they're, they were based on a 10 scale, one being poor in achieving the target, 10 being great in achieving the target. So some of the areas that we heard from the public that the city is doing really well and maintaining these targets include retaining its small town character. The city's waterfront and open space resources that are highly enjoyed by the community and that the city's critical areas and other natural resources are preserved while balancing development. So those are some of the areas that we heard back from the community that we are doing very well in maintaining those comprehensive plan targets. And the three areas that we heard the city might need to spend a little bit more time or the most time looking at in particular or beefing up in this comprehensive plan update would be ensuring more efficient patterns of development and how they impact infrastructure costs, essentially making sure development pays for development. Ensuring that housing types have been available to all members of the community, including diversity of housing types, which is actually great to hear for this update cycle, knowing that this is a particular focus from, from the state level and how we're going to implement that in the city zoning code. In conversations with Nick and Jim, the city's existing zoning code is actually set up very well for this type of missing middle housing. A lot of the city's existing zoning districts do permit this type of use or can easily be modified from a development standard standpoint to ensure that they can. So I think that this is going to be a great opportunity in this update cycle to really focus on what we heard from the community as a priority area and how we can address that. And then the last one was that walking, biking, driving, transit infrastructure make it easy to get around the city. That one got a fairly low response rate from the public. So making sure in this comprehensive plan update cycle that we're taking a look at that and setting up the framework to ensure that we can continue to develop this overall transportation network throughout the city. And another great look through this update process is going to be in our sub-areas specifically, where we can take a unique look at that multimodal transportation and the needs and desires within those sub-areas and really take a specific look in association with anticipated land uses in those sub-areas. With the sub-areas specifically, we heard a lot of common, commonalities between both the Bethel Lund and Bethel Sedgwick sub-areas. Our respondents told us that they would heavily prefer to see with regard to land uses, mixed-use commercial and residential. Again, not surprising based on what we heard with the diversity of housing types previous. And in both of the sub-areas, we had zero public respondents say that they thought that manufacturing or distribution type land uses were appropriate in the sub-areas. And from the planning perspective, what that, what that tells me is really looking to activate these sub-areas in terms of making them walkable or enough activity units to look at the PSRC perspective in terms of jobs that are within the sub-areas, housing units or areas to go in the sub-area that kind of make it interesting or unique from other parts of the city. From our transportation exercise, we had 30 total contributions in the online exercise. I think we had four in the in-person. So it was nice to get a little bit more robust feedback. And just a brief summary on that side, a majority of those were pedestrian or motor vehicle oriented. Not too surprising, motor vehicles in particular, knowing that a lot of infrastructure improvement requests that we typically get on the community development or planning side are related to congestion, traffic congestion, and is always a number one concern in association with development. So understanding that there is a framework to ensure that we are maintaining concurrency for development occasions. Obviously, that's more on the current planning side, but understanding that need or desire that the community has to make sure that traffic infrastructure is keeping pace with development is something that we can incorporate into the comprehensive plan. Outside of that, a lot of the pedestrian infrastructure improvement comments that we've heard were primarily around the Mile Hill Drive area, Southeast Lund and Bay Street, not surprising, kind of activating the waterfront area, looking into that. Public transit had five contributions, but a majority were actually outside of the city, at least online. So not, not necessarily a bad thing. It's a great idea because not only does public infrastructure, do we have to take a look internally to the city, but this plan being a comprehensive plan, there's a lot of coordination with different agencies and jurisdictions outside of the city too. So even though they might not be directly relevant within the city boundaries of Port Orchard, just hearing those comments and providing a framework of, okay, maybe this is a good basis for us to engage with transit agencies moving forward as a comp plan continues. So taking away comments, even if they're outside of maybe our specific focus area for the online engagement, there's still value that we had in incorporating those as well. So that's, that's just kind of a very brief overview of the public engagement side and some of the public engagement efforts that we've undergone since our kickoff meeting. Really, we're going to start digging in. I'm looking at this essentially as kind of a bookend to our initial public engagement outreach effort. Taking some time to slow down, figure out, hey, why didn't we get a lot of engagement upfront and how can we kind of boost this, knowing that this is a long-term update process and we have some time to kind of pump up the engagement, if you will. Especially knowing that we're going to come back for land use strategies workshops and policy workshops with the public as well. So making sure that we had kind of the right public engagement approach for this first phase and we felt comfortable with the amount of feedback that we got before we continue to engage the, the public was pretty important from our end. So that, that's kind of where we're at today. And if you guys have any comments and or questions, I would be happy to address those.
There any questions or comments by commissioners? I think my personal just observation is that when the city went to the public via the farmer's market, they got a greater response than when we asked the public to come to us. So I think that's what we need to think about moving forward.
Yeah, just to add to that, obviously, I think that's meeting people where they are is, is, is very important, especially, you know, for the government of the people. So to, I think the farmer's market was a very positive addition to the public outreach program.
Are there any other questions?
Alex, I've got a few questions. So forgive me, were the results of the, of the farmer's market incorporated into your computed, how is the city doing at meeting these targets questions, or is that just an online survey?
So the farmer's market drove people to provide their responses online. And my recollection is that we did get one physical survey response and that is not reflected in this current memo. But we wanted to make sure that this current memo could get updated kind of following a conversation or questions or feedback from the planning commission as well. So we'll take any physical surveys, including that one physical, add this into the kind of the final public survey results memo, knowing that kind of one survey result wasn't going to change a significant amount of the findings, but we do want to include it in the overall results.
How, I'm assuming you do this kind of exercise, it's a scale of one to nine, right?
One, one to 10 is, I think, how the slider was set up. Default's a five, I believe. The, the numeric values are not shown on the social pinpoint website itself. It's a slider scale. But there's increments that you can stop the slider at. And that's, that's how we pull the numeric values to correlate those.
Okay, and you do this work for other jurisdictions, I presume, and use the same system?
Yes, yep.
How do Port Orchard's numbers and rating averages as displayed on page five of your memo, how do they compare with some of the other work that you do?
Generally about the same. The numbers I have an inclination look pretty low overall. Is, is that kind of the thought? And I'll, I'll say at least in, in my experience, a lot of times a lot of public feedback that we receive is typically driven by people that want to want to identify areas to improve. A lot of times, people that think things are going well aren't necessarily the people that show up and provide feedback. So it's, it's pretty rare to see high eights, nines, tens even.
Yeah, okay. So, so we're about where everybody is, right?
Yeah, I, I think that's totally fair to say. It's, it's kind of hard to compare apples to apples, just knowing that every city and community has different kind of target statements and different poles and pressures of priorities. But especially with regards to housing availability and types being kind of one of the particularly low ones or making sure that development pays for itself or traffic congestion. Those, those are the three big ones that, I mean, you typically hear everywhere and, and really for good reason. Those are really what impact people in the day-to-day the most. So it's, it's very common to see those have pretty low scores.
Okay, just a quick, I, I want to provide a caveat before I make this comment. I do presentations sometimes and there's lots of data and things don't always go perfect. I think you might have had some data point around manufacturing or maybe I'm crazy. If you had a data point around manufacturing or industrial lands, I don't, I, I might miss it if it was in your survey. And items nine and 10 are, maybe one of them is mislabeled on page five. Again, not, not a big deal. I do it too. I totally understand it, but I'd be interested to know whether one of those was just a different data point.
So just, just kind of for my clarification here, are you looking at the Bethel Lund's sub-area land use preference result area?
I am looking at figure 10 specifically and items nine and 10 in figure 10.
Okay, one second. Hold that up. And I can take a look and either get you an answer or we can figure out how to clean that up and make it a little bit more clear in the future.
And an answer offline is more than fine for me. If they just have the same label on the planned target. So maybe, maybe one of them was copied into a row or some, not a big deal.
I see. Okay, yep, yep.
Thanks.
Perfect. No, I appreciate you pointing that out. Thanks.
Hey, no worries. I've, I do it too. It happens. Lots of data.
I would rather we get it cleaned up and it's a clean document that we can kind of attach to the comp plan update, move forward and everything kind of looks good and reads good as well.
And, and Joe, I, I've pulled up the comprehensive plan. I believe that 10 is supposed to say local businesses are supported by the community and government policies that promote economic development. And that's, that's the 10th bullet in our comp plan. And so I, I presume that's what we asked about and it's just a copy and paste error.
All right. Yeah, I assume so too. Thanks, Nick.
That, that is correct too. I just looked at our social pinpoint website. Social pinpoint online does read correctly. The memo does not. So we will update that for sure. And the, the results that we see there, the 4.53 for number 10 is reflective of the correct language. I think that was just a, a memo error. Yep.
It's a small addition, if I may, in terms of comment. Looking at the, the public feedback we got from transit oriented like feedback in terms of public transit, walking and biking infrastructure and, and motor vehicle traffic, I think that's good information. In terms of interpretation of that, that's information, I think it's important to view that not necessarily at a sort of mercantilist sense, like it all wraps up into one. Somebody who drives may also take public transit occasionally and it would affect them as well. So just looking at that, where it says, for example, in the conclusion on page 11 of 11, the last page there, it shows that a big basically contributors express the general opposition to the concern of the following. And it said unmitigated motor vehicle traffic congestion as the city contends, continues to grow. And I think that's both walking and biking infrastructure and public transit can contribute to lowering that. Obviously, every person who's riding a bus or riding a bicycle is one less car on the road, which can reduce traffic. So just generally thinking of transit all in one, every little bit of transit in all areas, be it, you know, driving, be it public transit or, or walking and biking affects all the others and improves the whole, whole system. So just a comment.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that for sure. I think that kind of paints the holistic kind of transportation network, which is really important for people to understand and us to include an update.
Was one of your questions when you were collecting this information as to whether or not the respondent was a city citizen or a city resident?
We did not have that. There is an option to require a zip code response in the survey and we chose not to include that because we thought that might preclude some engagement was, was our thought. Essentially, if you have to enter any kind of information upfront to submit feedback, I think a lot of people are kind of turned off by that idea from the get-go. So that, that was kind of our justification at the beginning to not require the zip code.
Well, requiring the zip code wouldn't have done you any good because a lot of South Kitsap has the same zip code and they're not within our boundaries. So asking the question, you know, are you a resident or are you not a resident? May, may be more helpful. I was just curious because when we're breaking these down to the rating averages, is that how our residents feel or is that how someone else feels?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, that, that is valuable. And just as a, some additional context for our social engagement moving forward, we are going to have obviously additional engagement opportunities with some of those workshops that I mentioned. And associated with those will be kind of additional surveys or online responses. And I think that's where we'll dive into some of more of the demographics of respondents, even getting down to age categories, because I think that paints a picture in terms of recreational service in particular in a lot of different ways. And also, I think from a transportation standpoint, having one locational data, not only just uh, one locational data, not only just resident or non-resident, but where within the city. Uh, but also demographic data can help uh, kind of boost some of our understanding of what we hear.
Because the goal is to figure out how to meet everyone's needs within our comprehensive plan. So, um, yeah. So is there anything else, any other questions or Alex, do you have anything else you want to share?
Uh, just from my end of HBLs and uh, looking forward to continuing the comp plan update process and really diving into some of the nuts and bolts of uh, land uses and policy updates. Uh, so I think the comp plan update is going to start moving fairly fast here fairly soon. So uh, I think I'll be back uh, here in front of you guys sooner than later. So thanks for the time.
Hey, thank you very much. Moving on down, um, our agenda, we are going to have a presentation on the stormwater comprehensive plan. And Jim, are you going to introduce Jackie?
Uh, Jackie Brown, our utility manager, is going to provide an update on the stormwater comprehensive plan.
Good evening. Um, as Jim said, I'm the utility manager for the city and let me apologize in advance, this was not my uh, program. Our long-term uh, stormwater program manager uh, recently left the city and uh, I'm, we were expecting him to do this presentation, so I may not be the most knowledgeable, um, but I was involved in the process all along. So um, hopefully, if you have questions, I can answer them. I don't expect that um, many of you abs- actually waded through this 174-page document. Um, but I can give you just a brief overview. Uh, we started out the, the impetus, the original impetus for this plan was the 2019 through 2020 uh, for um, MPDES or National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit from Department of Ecology. Uh, this was one of the requirements. And through the process, we realized that we could really create a living document here. So we identified 10 long-term goals. Um, they're on page 14, 15, 16 in there, if you want to go into them specifically. Um, and then through that process, we looked at what system we have now, where we wanted to be, and then some capital improvement projects that we needed to implement in order to get there. We actually identified 20 projects uh, and kind of re- realized that that was really far reaching, especially for the very first time that we've that the city has produced a stormwater comprehensive plan. So we narrowed that down to 10. And then through the process, um, had a financial consulting firm look at the financial impact of that and develop basically three different levels of funding or of, um, of implementation. So, um, this plan has been, um, through the utility committee, through the finance committee, and a short presentation, a short presentation was given to the city council. So this is really the last stop to see what the planning commission feels about our first run at doing a stormwater comprehensive plan. So that's really a, a 30,000-foot overview. And I'd be happy to, you know, do, do my best to entertain any questions that you might have.
Do the commissioners have any questions or comments? Because the, the commission is not going to be making a recommendation on this, uh, to send it forward to council. We're just taking a look at it. Um, I will.
Paul. Real quick, I said a quick question. Um, it says in the, the, the 10 sort of things you guys are focusing on, on page 14, 15, uh, in terms of uh, infrastructure operations and maintenance, is that all city owned and privately owned stormwater infrastructure, including stormwater control and water facilities functions as designed? What, like specifically, are you guys talking like in terms of new regulations or I understand, obviously, with city-owned property, it's pretty easy to just, you know, more closely monitor like maintenance, but does it go into like regulation or is it just some things that we'd like to see?
Um, well, it, no, it's, it's how we're meeting the, the requirements. Um, we, because we have an MS4 system, um, we have to make sure that, like, for instance, as an example, good example of this is we had um, a private business that had a problem with their own internal sewer lines and had a, a plumbing company come in to, um, to correct the situation. They put a camera up the line to find out what it was, got it lost and ended up poking a hole in our sewer main and creating a spill into the MS4 of raw sewage. So those are the kinds of things that we're looking to prevent with this plan as far as on the private side. Of course, on our, our city-owned infrastructure, we have a couple of staff members that are tasked with with doing the um, maintenance of the, of our sewers, I mean, our stormwater system. And also, um, making sure that the catch basins get cleaned annually and, you know, all of the things that go into operating the stormwater plan.
And, and I would add that in, in most new development in the city, we have um, large stormwater ponds that, that detain stormwater and release it at a, a, a more metered rate. Some of those are privately owned and some of them are publicly owned and they have to be cleaned out periodically. You have a buildup of of all kinds of uh, pollutants that are from runoff. And so we have to do enforcement where we write letters to homeowners associations and tell them that they have to do maintenance on their private facility. And then the public ponds, the city staff actually goes in and cleans those out from time to time. And so that's the, the type of uh, maintenance uh, of, of stormwater infrastructure that, that could be considered.
Thank you.
I am looking um, feverishly, Jackie, I don't know if you know, because I just had it. Um, the page that shows the financial uh, increases to our population to our users.
Yes, it's uh, in the very back, it's the very end is where the financial uh, assessment is. Uh, let's see if I can get to it here.
Yeah, see, I just had it and now I'm struggling because I'm wanting it. Found it. On page 57. That the only comment I'm going to make is I know these things are all important. Um, and I know that we had a consultant, um, determine what these rates should be, but it just is kind of, um, knee jerk to me, I guess it's 58. That we're almost doubling the rates in five years, that monthly, that, that just seems, um, like quite a bit to me. And so I just wanted to say that out loud. I know that that's a decision the council will make.
Well, if I could respond to that real briefly in the discussions that as this has wound through the other committees. Um, one of the, you know, they're, they're asking for, the, the plan is kind of for looking for the adoption and choosing a level of service, a level of one of two or of three. And there is a fourth option that we've discussed, which is to continue to, to have a goal of having the level of service at level one, but yet not funding it. And so there's, there's that option as well. Um, I wouldn't recommend that. I don't know, I know that the Stormwater Utility was formed in 2007. I don't know when this rate was set up or if it's ever been modified. So that's another thing to take into account.
And I was looking at level one, if you all go all the way down to level three. You know, it's going up three times, well, yeah, from 14 to 45. So those are just shock factors. Um, that will have to be considered.
Absolutely. And level three, just in case you weren't able to see the, the intricacies of it, level three is adding like, like I think it's three or four or five staff members in order to bring level of service up to that. So.
Right. It did, I did see the FTEs continued to climb and that obviously is a a large expense and it's also an ongoing expense. It never goes away.
Right.
Are there any other questions or comments on the um, stormwater comprehensive plan?
I, I was just going to make um, one comment and ultimately, we do want to integrate the stormwater comprehensive plan into the city comprehensive plan. And so this likely needs to be added to appendix B. And whether we do that as part of the 2023 amendments that we're considering later tonight or um, just uh, incorporate it next year, um, you know, I, I don't know that it, it really matters whether we wait until um, next year or not. Um, Jackie was there. I, I don't know what the timeline is for the adoption of these or the consideration by council. But um, were you trying to have this actually adopted into the city's comprehensive plan by reference? As part of this process tonight?
Uh, I don't think that that's necessary to meet the requirements of the permit. I think that the council has to um, put their stamp on this document sometime before the end of this year.
Okay. And, and I, I, I think I would agree with that. I think that when it comes to actually making capital expenditures, the projects have to get into the comprehensive plan before we can spend the money. But I, I think the money has to be collected before we're going to be embarking on, on any of these 10 projects in the plan.
Oh, except that we're going, of course, going after um, grant money.
Right, right. So, but if it, if it gets added to the, the comp plan for the city in 2024, um, we're likely not going to start spending that money until next year anyway, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So with that conversation, we do not have to take any action on this tonight.
No, I don't believe that you have to.
Okay, thank you. Are there?
Sorry, uh, will we be seeing this again?
It will come forward, um, likely when you adopt the periodic update to the comprehensive plan in 2024. There's an appendix B to our comp plan that lists all of the documents adopted by reference. This will likely be a document adopted by reference. And I assume also that we will add to the utilities element, the table of projects and the dollar amounts associated with the projects, just to to duplicate that information in directly in the comp plan itself.
So is that, Nick, can I, if I could ask real quickly, does that mean that I believe it's chapter seven that has utilities? Will that just be a section added to seven or will it be a different area?
I think it would be added to seven, assuming that the numbering stays the same in the new, the updated plan next year.
Thank you.
I feel badly that Commissioner Bailey isn't with us tonight because she's been interested in this for a long time.
Well, she's welcome to call me if I can answer questions. I, I'm, I'm not the subject matter expert, but um, I'm quickly getting up to speed with, with Zach's departure.
Zach Lynn?
Yes.
Well, that's unfortunate. Zach's one of my favorites, so. Thank you, Jackie. Um, appreciate your spending time with us and explaining this as as best you could. It's a very thorough document. And I will look forward to seeing with the city council how they move up forward.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
I said, thank you for your time.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Jackie. Moving on down, we have um, a public hearing on our 2023 comprehensive plan amendments. Um, and Jim, I will let you give a brief on this and then we will open the public hearing.
Jim Fisk, senior planner, City of Port Orchard. Uh, Port Orchard Municipal Code 20.04 outlines the process to amend the city's adopted comprehensive plan. The city annually processes amendments, both applicant-initiated and those initiated by the city. While the amendments before the commission tonight are the second comprehensive plan amendments this year. The municipal code allows additional amendments when related to uh, budget adoption. The amendments presented to the commission tonight relate to the transportation improvement program and the capital facilities element, which were introduced to the planning commission in August. Since then, the tip was amended slightly to reflect the results of a community survey related to the Salmonberry and Bethel intersection. Also, we've included an amendment to the capital facilities element to include a line item for fu- future property acquisition for city facilities. Having this in the capital facility element allows the city some flexibility in future property acquisition. Since the publication of uh, tonight's packet, the city issued a determination of nonsignificance for the amendments and requested 60-day review by the Washington Department of Commerce. Additionally, tonight's public hearing was properly noticed, consistent with the requirements of Port Orchard Municipal Code 20.25 on September 28th. In response to the notice of hearing, the Department of Community Development has not received any comments related to the comp plan amendments. Tonight, we asked the planning commission, after taking public testimony, to make a recommendation to the city council on the 2023 comprehensive plan amendment. Staff recommends approval of the amendment as presented.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing for the 2023 comprehensive plan um, amendments. Is there anyone who wishes to give testimony on these amendments? Is there anyone uh, on Zoom that would be raising their hand? Or anyone in the audience who would like to provide testimony to these comp plan amendments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open now for discussion by the commission, um, on these amendments. Does anyone have any comments? Hearing none, I, I know that um, at our last meeting, these were introduced to us and we went over the transportation elements, um, in detail at that point, but we have changed the Salmonberry roundabout in um, the, the timing of it. So I don't know, there may be questions about that. What we did not hear about last month was the capital facilities um, addition. Do you want to just give a brief um, explanation on that, Nick?
Yeah, so the, the city um, is uh, running out of office space and we also have a, a parking need downtown. And we're aware of a potential opportunity coming up to, to purchase some additional property um, that would, that would meet uh, one or both of those needs. And so the, the mayor asked us to uh, include a line item in the capital facility plan that would allow the city council, if they choose to budget this money, to, to go forward and purchase um, additional property. And I, I don't want to disclose more about the, the potential purchase other than that, but it's, it's a fairly generic line item that allows us to to make that sort of acquisition if an opportunity arises.
It's also my understanding that if the city were to look for grants or loans or do any sort of application, that it's important that we have the line item in the comprehen- in our capital facilities plan.
That is correct.
Yeah, without that, we're kind of um, in a stalemate of getting things done. Uh, so with that, um, if there's any more questions or comments from the planning commission, we would entertain a motion to approve um, a recommendation for these, for the council to approve these, um, comprehensive plan amendments.
I'll move that the planning commission recommend approval of an ordinance approving the 2023 comprehensive plan amendments related to the transportation improvement program and capital facilities element as presented.
Thank you.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded to recommend to the city council to approve an ordinance approving these um, comprehensive plan amendments. Is there anyone who would be voting against the motion? I will ask a second time, is there anyone who would be voting against the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes with unanimous consent. Our next agenda item is also a public hearing. And it is regarding temporary signage in Wrighton Way. And also, Mr. Fisk, I believe you will do the introduction to this.
Actually, I'm going to take this one.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so over the last, um, going on a year or more now, we have been studying the temporary sign issue in Port Orchard and um, at our last meeting, we, we brought forward a memorandum that outlined the findings of our year-long research documenting the prevalence of temporary signs within the city. And we had a spirited discussion of some of the options that could be available. And it was the planning commission's um, uh, recommendation that an ordinance be drafted that follow, um, loosely the model that Gig Harbor has adopted, which is to create sign zones that follow specific road corridors and sort of identify where in the city temporary signs are appropriate. Um, the approach also looked at some code from Gig Harbor that, um, number one, in the city of Gig Harbor, city staff has the authority to remove signs that don't comply with the temporary sign rules. They also specify that temporary signs can't be located within roundabouts, medians, in shoulders or travel lanes and areas that aren't accessible by a sidewalk or walking path. So essentially, we don't want people stopping their car on the street or navigating down the fog lane of a road where there aren't safe walking facilities to put signs in because it is, it is unsafe. Where our code differs from Gig Harbor and based on the, the data that we collected about accidents and where we're seeing a lot of these temporary signs, we are encouraging these signs to be located within the corridors, but not at intersections. And so there is a spacing requirement that says you can't put a sign within a certain proximity of an intersection. And then, but in the segments between intersections in that landscape strip or on the back of a sidewalk, if the right-of-way extends beyond the sidewalk, that is an appropriate place where, where temporary signs would be allowed. We did stop short of implementing any sort of permitting requirement for temporary signs. I think that, you know, Gig Harbor uses a model where they stick, they affix a label to the sign, identifying who it is and whether it's been approved or not. We, I, I think that taking this first step of just really narrowing where signs should be based on safety concerns and, and trying to, to identify where we're seeing a lot of these signs and where it is safe to put them and where it isn't, is a good first step. And if we need to go further and, and look at a permitting addition later, we certainly can. But for now, the, the ordinance that we have drafted and put forward, we think will pass legal scrutiny and certainly will, will improve safety in the city where you just have a ton of signs cluttered at, at all of our intersections all over town. So the, the recommendation is to hold a public hearing on this. And after the public hearing, consider making a motion to recommend approval of the draft temporary sign code.
Thank you. With that introduction, I will open the public hearing for the temporary signage in right-of-way ordinance. Is there anyone here that wishes to give testimony at this public hearing? Or do we have anyone online who would like to give testimony? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And I will open it up to the planning commission for comments or questions.
I have a question. Turn on your mic. Nick, what you just, what you just talked about Gig Harbor and having like permitting for the signs? So they do that? But we don't, we don't want to do that?
Well, I, I think that having us put labels on somebody else's sign to identify it, we could certainly do that. But then the question is, do we pay a fee for it? And we really can't charge fees on political signs because it's a prior restraint on political speech. My preference would not to be, not to distinguish between commercial and non-commercial signs for permitting if we don't have to. If, if, if we have new safety concerns because of this new permitting or this new regulatory effort, we could certainly come back and look at, at getting labels on the signs. Like if people aren't removing their signs when they're dilapidated or worn out or if elected officials for office aren't coming and removing them within a reasonable amount of time. You know, once, once election season is over, I think we could consider like having a thirty-day limit and then making people come get them. But for now, we're just going to police the areas where they are and aren't allowed. And we'll just pull the signs when they're in, in places where they shouldn't be. And the places where they are allowed, we have all of these corridors, but they have to be away from the intersection. So there's, there's somewhat of a, a limit on how much space is available. And, and I would also say that the you know, you're, you're putting a sign at an intersection is visible from four, you know, four legs of an intersection. Whereas on a corridor, it's visible to, to one direction or maybe two directions of travel. So i- is it worth putting that many signs out? You know, it's, it's a different, I guess it's a different calculation on anybody who might want to put a sign out on, on how effective it might be.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Morrison, you have had comments before on signs. Do you have any on this particular ordinance?
Just to say thanks to the planning, the planning department for their hard work. That's, that's my only comment.
Paul?
Yeah, just get it out on to that, I think that of the, of section one, subsection two there, where it's talking about dilapidated signs being removed either by the owner. And if the owner doesn't remove it, then, then we'll remove it for them. I think that's a, a good, well, an important addition, at least that was what I was concerned with last time. On, on top of that quick question, where does it specifically say in terms of that sub, that, in terms of section one about like a, a sign becoming out of date? Let's say it's not dilapidated or worn, but it is out of date. I'm not saying here, but I could just be missing it.
It doesn't, it, it just says dilapidated or worn. And you know, I think that you know, it's the time of year where we, we have a lot of candidates for office that are, that have signs out. And they tend to be pretty good about removing signs after election season. And then the number of signs, while there still will be signs, there aren't nearly as many of them as there are at this very moment. But you know, if we had a lot of signs out there that were, were falling apart and people weren't removing them, we could put a, we could put contact information on a permit sticker and, and track the person down and say, hey, you've got twenty signs out there and they're all falling apart, go remove them. Rather than having city staff do that work, but it's almost easier if we see them just to stop and, and pick them up.
I think just to, for maybe more clarification, the way I heard Paul's question is if the sign is for an event, say the seagull calling contest. And the seagull calling contest is May. And the sign is still up in September. We don't have a provision to take that now.
We don't, and, and that is a content, content.
Content and we.
Code enforcement, because you're reading the sign to determine that this happened four months ago. And I think a better course of action would be to call the event organizer and say, hey, why haven't you removed your signs? And, and you know, just tell them to do the right thing.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, to be fair, I haven't seen it become an issue, but I'm like, it could be, I haven't really been paying attention on that one.
Oh, yeah.
But
oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'd certainly, if, if, you know, just tracking them down and saying, hey, just get this out, your, your, your sale passed quite a little bit ago. That would, that would certainly fit into it.
I would like to also compliment the staff for the ordinance they brought forward because I believe they addressed all of our needs that we've expressed. But they've done it in the name of safety and not in the name of aesthetics. And so what we're doing here is we're trying to make our travel ways safer for both the people that are driving on them or walking on them or the people that are placing these temporary signs up. So I appreciate that effort that you were able to meet the needs of the planning commission all within the boundaries of safety. So thank you very much and without causing an undue amount of additional work for your department and the code enforcement folks. Is there any other comments or questions about the temporary signage ordinance? Okay, hearing none, we would entertain a motion to recommend the city council approve the ordinance?
I move to recommend that city council approve an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code twenty dot one, three, two as presented.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, Annette. It has been moved and seconded to recommend the city council to approve the ordinance as presented. Is there anyone who would be voting against that motion? I will ask a second time, is there anyone who would be voting against that motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved with unanimous consent. Thank you. So moving down our agenda, we are now at the director's report. I believe that's you, Mr. Bond.
I don't have anything to report, I was trying to think of something good, but. Oh, yeah, I guess I can, I, I don't remember if I reported about this in September, but we have received an application for an agreement that will protect the redwood tree on Mitchell. And so Jim is going to be working to get that to council as soon as possible so that we can keep that project moving while also protecting the tree that was of great concern to a, a pretty large group in the community.
Okay, I have a, a question for the director. How are we doing on replacing Josie?
Well, we, we have just concluded, I think we interviewed nine people. So we are, we are in the final stages of making a decision and so hopefully hopefully we'll have an announcement here, we'll see.
Okay. Does anyone have anything for the good of the commission? Anything anyone wants to share? Hearing none, we will stand adjourned, thank you.
Yep.